I am the YouTube notification noise. Transition. I did it again. Wow. I'm so good at that. How do I leave? Ah, there we go. Ha ha. Yeah, I understand. Whoa.
Whoa.
I understand live streaming now. If she yells again, can you just put her in the basement?
Yeah.
Um, and just keep an eye out for Madoka running off to bother the cat.
Okay.
All right. Chill Saturday stream with me and, okay.
No Serena.
Not Serena. Someone babied too close to the sun. Um, we went on a walk this morning and our dog, um, Madoka has injured her paw once again. She plays ball very, very hard. Um, and it's always like just breaking her claws. Um, so when we come back from the walk that me and Ursula do without the dogs, um, she's always excited because that's when we play ball. Um, but not today because her paw is broken. So instead she got a Kong full of peanut butter and it is, it is, it has appeased her because if she doesn't get anything when we come back, um, she will complain until something good happens. She's, she's very demanding and she's very good at it. Um, yeah. Um, I'm, I'm talking. I'm saying words. I hope the music is sufficient in sound. Um. I don't know. It's just a chill Saturday stream. Nothing, nothing crazy. Um, just need to get some recording done so that we can put out videos. That's how that works. And so that Ursula can get the web tune out one day. In theory. Oh, she's back. It's just me. That's all that matters though.
Yeah.
I'm the, I'm the only cool one in existence in this, this realm called Earth.
It's true.
Juliet be looking sanctimonious.
She is all the time.
I mean, if I was her, I would also feel the same. Okay, remember, don't be too precious.
It's really hard.
You've just been, you've been getting progressively more precious about this.
Listen.
The, the Lul scene, you finished it very quick and then you became precious. That's okay. Just roll back a little bit. You know, we want it done. The goal was to make these complete in like an hour or so. Okay, I think your microphone is a little too close to your face. Because they can just hear you breathing. It's okay. There's just a lot of like. But not because you were a dirty mouth breather, but because you were mouth breathing directly into the microphone.
That sounds like dirty mouth.
No, 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 no. No, I'm not. You're, you're putting the words in my mouth. I don't mouth breathe, so I don't know how you're getting those in there. She's so sassy. Sassy lady, sassy boy, sassy life, sassy wife. Cause remember, Ursula, your worst art is someone's best.
Oh.
It's okay. There's nothing wrong with that statement.
No, everyone's at a different point.
Exactly. Yeah. Before, before you start fighting, some people just haven't had years of skill and you do, and that's why you can make really nice art really quick. And that's okay. I'm not trying to poop on other people.
Good. No, I know you're not.
I love the image on screen. Makes it look like her character is saying that. Oh. Yeah. Their expressions is just too perfect. So true. Yeah. No, but it's like, it's like you were saying, like you're just, you're just talented and you've worked really hard and you should feel good about yourself.
True.
It was kind of interesting listening to your video and, um, I came to this understanding that we always talk about how you come to a point in your art where you know more than you can accomplish, right? Like your skill in understanding outpaces your ability to art.
Yes.
And I've just never felt that about writing.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, I just realized, like, after thinking about it, it's like, I actually don't really, I relate to this with art where I can see better, but like as far as writing goes, like I never feel that way.
I have a question.
Okay, what's your question?
So there is, so, um, in the, in Manga in Theory and Practice by Araki.
Yeah.
Um, he talks about, there's moments when in art where, um, the way he describes it is like you're suddenly blessed by like the manga gods and like your, what you create is like beyond your skill. Like if you just have a drawing that turns out really, really well. And you're not exactly sure why. It's just serendipitous. Do you ever have that with writing?
No.
Huh.
I just think my writing is really good and I've always thought that regardless of skill level and I've just continued to improve in skill. Like I can look back at stuff and be like, oh, that needed work, but like, no. Yeah, I, I, I came to this conclusion because it's just really weird because I, because I know that it's a thing, but I realize I've never felt it. And I wonder if other writers, do you feel this about writing?
Um. Yeah, honestly.
Yeah, you feel like you can't match up to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I'll, I'll have a, an image in my mind and then I write it down and describe it and it's like, uh, this is nothing like how I pictured.
Nah, it's always like exactly what I want it to be.
Huh.
I wish it would come faster.
Hmm.
Like I can look, if it's like a blank page and nothing's happening, like, I'm like, come on. Just come out, but like, once it does come out, like I'm always happy with it. Like, I don't think it's perfect when it comes out, like it, it needs like editing and stuff, but I always know kinda what to do. Like sometimes I get stuck, but it's not because of skill level. It's usually just like a unique problem coming up in the story that needs, um, fixed. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. Cause I've never caught, got to the point where I'm like, oh, this is a writing challenge that is beyond me. And you know, obviously this sounds like so like smoke up my own ass kind of thing, but like, I don't know. I just don't relate to it. And I just actually found that kind of interesting.
Yeah.
Cause like I totally get it on the art thing, like where it's like, I want this to look a certain way and it's like not coming out that way. And like, I know how to make that happen, but it's just not happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Writers in the chat, what do you think?
Yeah. Cause like, I'll send you stuff and I'll be like, this isn't like where I want it yet. But it's like, it's because it's like the sketch, like it'll get better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like, I know how to improve this. I just haven't gotten around to that yet and it won't be until I work on the entire project.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Totally.
I guess, I guess in the past, there have been times where I did say that like, I'm not at a level where I can do this yet, I guess. I guess I've, I've done that before because like I stopped working on AVO for a bit because it felt beyond me. So I guess that is kind of a thing.
Yeah.
But. Yeah.
Hmm. It's not the same feeling.
But it's not the same feeling, right? It's like, it's like looking at like a really skilled work and it's just like, I don't, like if I know how to accomplish it in theory, like I feel like I'm able to do it. It was just like, it just, I think AVO just felt like really overwhelming because there were so many characters going on.
Yeah.
And I was just like, I think I need to practice with fewer characters first.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Um. Maybe there's like poetry concepts that are like a little more difficult and that I can appreciate. I think, I think that would be somewhere in writing where like I can appreciate it. But I feel like it's partly because I just don't understand it.
Hmm.
Um, and I feel like when I sit down and try to understand it, like I can't do it perfectly, but I can do it about as much as I expect.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, I don't know if this is like a perspective thing on just like how I think about things, or if it's like, I am just God gifted with talent.
Right? I don't know.
I think it's just like a perspective thing, or maybe it's just not my sort of challenge. Maybe it's a self doubt thing.
It could be.
Maybe I'm oblivious to things. That's, that's pretty common with me. Mental health concepts, that, that however, I can hear all about it, but I cannot achieve it. Yeah, because I just sit here trying to think of a time that I was trying to write something and I knew what I needed, but it couldn't happen.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
I think, I think it, I think it has something to do with me being a little full of myself. Which is fine. I just have a lot of
Confidence is good.
Confidence in myself, even though like I know deep down, like I'm not always the best, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, how are you? I'm good.
Hi.
How are you Valerie?
Madoka, what are you doing?
Coughing.
Coffee.
Yeah, I think my thing is like, I, I just attribute anything, anything to style. I'm that, I'm that archetype. That's like, well, it's just my style.
There we go.
But I feel like I've come around on that where like as a teen or whatever, you're like, that's just my style. And then you grow up and it's like, okay, it's not just my style. Like I'm bad at things. Um, I guess I should improve on them. And then it goes all the way back around to like, no, it's just my style.
I guess like. Yeah, fair. Fair.
That was Tyler Templeton's thing though. He's, like, I disagreed with like his point, but he was the one who said that style is just mistakes in your art that you struggle to fix.
Yeah.
And then like embrace, just like paraphrasing that.
Yeah.
Um, which I disagree with, like obviously style can be intentional and stuff, but, but I do understand it on some level.
Mm hmm.
That style does come a little bit from leaning into your strengths and away from your weaknesses.
Yes.
Just like can't draw hands? Ha ha. I will draw them like this now. I'm with another lady named Valerie out there in the wild. It makes me happy because there's not many of us where I'm at.
Oh ding.
Oh damn, I, I used to feel that when I had a different name. I still do. I actually, I don't, I don't know a lot of Reeds. They're usually like, um, characters.
See.
People name their characters Reed, not their children.
You and I have our names, everyone names their like Victorian children. Our names.
I realize that a lot of people don't know my name is Reed.
True.
I've just been off of stream too long because like online I'm Bones, um, offline I'm Reed. Ooh, stream finally caught one. Hello, Renwick. Welcome to the stream.
Welcome.
This is a chill Saturday stream. We're, we're chilling. I just wanted to watch Ursula draw and to like accountability her so she gets some work done. And we're gonna call, okay. Regardless of how shit her art is, okay, we need to say that is the best thing. Move on to the next panel. Okay?
Is there a threshold of how shit it can be? Cause I'm sure there's a point where it's like, no, Ursula, you have to actually draw something here. It can't be that poo poo.
That one picture of Slau, that is my threshold.
Okay.
I think, I think you're gonna hit threshold pretty frequently. Um, again, because you're a perfectionist when you, you're never gonna hit below threshold.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have anxiety.
Yep, you do. It's just like in therapy where I, I hate being praised. Um.
I love the idea of your therapist being like, I'm really proud of like all the work you've done and you're like, shut up.
Yeah, it's, it's like, I'm like, no, I should not be praised. I shouldn't ask for praise. Um. You never ask for praise. That is what conceited people do, which is very funny after all that I've just been talking about.
I'm still great at writing, but I'm not conceited.
Other people cannot say it. Only I am allowed to say it about myself. Um, no, it's other things. Like I'm very confident in, in writing.
Yeah.
Like when my therapist is like, you're really good at writing. I'm like, yeah, I know.
Thanks.
It, it, it is funny where he's like trying to push me into like, um, because I am really bad at taking compliments and he'll compliment my writing. I'm like, no, I'm really good at writing. Like I, I am fully confident in this ability and you praising me does nothing. Um, praising my personality? Horrible. No, my personality is terrible.
No, you're a big sweetheart and I love you.
No, I'm mean and everyone hates me.
You're charming and funny and sweet.
Yeah, basically that's what we, we go through.
Fight it out.
Anyways, I have no clue where I started on this point.
Hmm. I guess, do you ever?
But right, perfection Ursula, because, because you're so bad at it, you're not gonna do below threshold art. If you do, I'll never tell you and you'll never be able to find it. Cause you're so bad at assessing yourself. Sorry, what were you gonna say?
Um, I wanted to go back to what we were talking about earlier with like the seeing flaws in your work.
Yeah.
Cause your knowledge outpaces your skill.
Right.
Um.
Listen to Ursula.
Yes, exactly. Listen to me.
Okay.
When I say my art is shit, it's shit. No, um, I know. And the thing is like, I, I shouldn't say that because it can be like inadvertently hurtful to other people.
Yeah, like I was saying, your best is someone's worse.
Yeah.
Wait.
Wait.
I mean, I guess it goes.
That it goes that way too.
Loud.
It goes that way too.
Okay, you, you have increased in volume, out, outpacing your microphone. Sorry to stop you. I just, I just heard the clipping and it was like. But yeah, your best is someone's worst.
True. And then my.
Worst is someone's best. Yeah, exactly. So.
No, about him being a sweetheart. Correct. He doopy.
I can be your angle. I can be your devil.
Welcome Volpeen Faye.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome. Um, right, uh, skill.
Volpine? Probably. It's probably Volpine.
Right.
Like, like, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not Volpeen.
Sorry. Please forgive me.
You both sound so sweet. Uh huh huh.
Aw.
I don't trust anyone who uh huh huh's.
True. You are an anime villain if you uh huh huh. As someone who uh huh huh's, I would know.
Oh, let me get this.
Okay.
Right.
Do you ever, oh, I lost the plot. I don't know.
You were talking about not seeing flaws in your work.
Right, but do you ever? You've never had that moment where you've looked at a piece of writing? And you're like, something's off about this, but I can't figure out what? Cause I understand like there's solutions to that in art. Cause I can be like, here Bones, something's off. What is it? And you'll be like, oh, the perspective is off or oh, this eye is out of place or something. And the same goes for writing. I could show it to you and you'd be like, well, the pace is like weird and repetitive. But yeah, do you ever look at your own stuff and you're like, I don't know what's wrong? Skill issue.
No, because if something's wrong, like I should know what it is. Like I don't know how I wouldn't know what it is.
Huh.
And I think it's just like, there's so many solutions to things. I guess like sometimes it might take me a bit to find like the true answer. But is there a true answer? I don't know.
I wonder too if, I, I guess it, yeah, it does come back to the style thing.
Yeah.
Cause I think there's definitely writers who hold the opinion that there's like a way to write. That's correct.
Yeah.
There's like objective rules and same with art. And I know I've, I've had it drill into me that there's like objective rules to good art and there isn't. It just depends on what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
So I think I'll, I'll look at the objective quote unquote rules that I've been told and I'll be like, well, it doesn't hold up to this. So it's bad or it's wrong.
Yeah, I think that's on you.
Skill issue.
No, I don't think it's a skill issue. I think it's the opposite. I think it's, um.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm being ironic.
I know. But you don't have the right to be. Cause you're just backhandedly talking about your art.
My clever ruse.
Yeah, I saw through it. Forgiven. Ooh woo. You're welcome. Yeah. Volp, Volpeen.
Sorry.
No.
Volpine?
But yeah, like I look at me art, me writing.
Me art.
I look at me writing and I think, yeah, it's good.
Good.
I like it. I found the first livestream I've caught. Hello, welcome. We're doing a, a rare Saturday one. Hopefully it becomes less rare. It'd be cool.
Be neat.
Yeah, I'm trying to like do more YouTube because I would like to have money. Um, but also in like a chill way so that I have mental health.
Hmm, the trade.
The bargain. Oh my god.
Madoka, go drink some water baby. He just looks at you with little puppy eyes like, what? What I do?
See, your art's so good. Like you don't have to mammy pammy with this. That's the point. As we were saying, you just need to tell Ursula that her art is good. Move to the next panel.
Okay.
That's the, that's the mantra of today's dream and the rest of her life.
Yes.
I love that we designed such a little intricate outfit. It, it works well when you're doing the watercolors.
Yeah, for watercolor, it's like so good.
But this is just to share with, this is for the Victorian children with their iPads. Okay?
Oh damn, they upgraded to iPads.
Um, they share an iPad actually, just different, different groups of Victorian children in the Mayans have a communal iPad.
They find it on the corpse of another child. So they can read their webtoons
Yeah Well, it's it's for the ones that don't have iPhones individually they have an iPad so it's larger so they can all see the webtoons
Gotcha
Yep If you didn't if you didn't catch last stream this makes no sense Basically why she was what the blah 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 what she is working on right now is a Webtoonized version of a novel that I wrote that has beautiful Hand done watercolor illustrations and you can buy it on Etsy or on itch.io at McCann Gray Whatever ad read For some reason some of you are interested in buying things and want me to tell you where to find them Anyways, I also just like to give my art out for free for people to enjoy And I want to do this via a a webtoon because I also want you you youngins Who always tell me how you don't have money in your wallets you don't have two coins to 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 rub together because everyone does debit now You don't have two credit cards to rub together And y'all wanna read the things and I want you to comment and know what the heck is going on And half of you are comic people and you're scared of too many words so this is my solution And it'll be free once it comes out And it'll come out when we have a sufficient amount of pages done and Ursula finishes the audiobook Because there are people who paid to hear it
Yes
Question, what do you guys think about hiding art from the world because of the awareness of people looking at it And being insecure themselves? Am I the only one who's ever thought of this? I've never thought of doing that um I don't It always felt selfish for me to post my art no like for one For all the people you make feel uncomfortable and insecure about Themselves you're probably inspiring a bunch of people and giving them Lovely feelings by seeing your art And you're not responsible for other people's insecurities I guess
Totally
Yeah Like Everyone feels insecure and it sucks but No You're not selfish like you worked hard to get where you're at
Yeah
Yeah, I'll write a first draft and think okay this is just the first draft then my third draft I'm like why does it sound Not sound like Ernest Hemingway I just maybe I don't read enough books but my book like No, like the thing is like the thing is like I prefer reading my own books to reading other people's books Cuz they're just so perfectly tailored to me and I love them so like I just do not feel this way About my own art I guess like I just don't Like it's not gonna be everyone's favorite thing it's not gonna get five stars across the board from everyone but for me all of my work Is five stars Until I get way better than I was in the past and then I look back at it and I'm like eh No longer what I'm into but when I was when I was sixteen I probably still would have liked it You know Yeah, like I like to listen to my own writing to fall asleep to Cuz it's just it's just so lovely and I I can do a little laugh and I I doze off But yeah
Hell yeah
No, there's nothing wrong with being proud of yourself and You know
I think it's like I think if you're worrying about Being I don't know arrogant or selfish like I think that's a sign that you're probably not going to be that way
A hundred percent
Yeah, it's a good sign
Yeah, it's like I was saying with Ursula where it's like she was like okay but what if my art is actually bad When I'm trying to make these fast panels that are just sufficient right and I'm like You're not gonna do that because you're so worried about that so stop Worrying about that that's not on the table You know
Totally
Like Like some people just have different worries than you and they're valid cuz we're all different
Yeah And yeah, and I think like Yeah, I don't know Cuz I I definitely am someone who's like insecure with sharing my work like it I go through phases where I hide right But it I don't know I it's 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 genuinely pleasing when I see work and people Enjoy it or it inspires them or if they're like I don't know can I use this for my avatar on Tumblr or something it's like oh hell yeah you liked it enough that you wanna put it on your stuff
Yeah
Not in a ceiling way obviously but in just like a Enjoy way
Yeah
Yeah, where it's it's very gratifying and like It creates community too cuz if
Oh, here's the answer
What?
To the thing about panels being good enough and stuff Your best work or your your crappiest work now Is way better than your crappiest work that you worked really hard on for like Sovereign and Pretty Mouth and people love those for some reason and still buy them so
True
The bar is very, very low
People like what they like
Yeah
I can't judge them just cuz I don't I don't like it anymore
Also like comics like they just Comics can be beautiful
Yeah
Stunning amazing favorite beautiful illustrations or they can be serviceable You know and it is fine to be serviceable if you get the story across like that's all that matters that's all that that's all that we're doing here The only art that doesn't work um and that I will point out is that is like stuff that doesn't Serve the story correctly
Yeah
Yeah Like that's the only way You're not good enough Redo the panel but that's like a fundamental thing
Yeah
Like I don't I don't really care If people's faces are weird
Yeah
And their eyes don't align And if people are like oh look at this bad art you can be like it's free shut up
It's free you pedant
Go somewhere else
Yeah
I'm not paid enough to give a shit That's art across the board
Yeah
No one is paid enough to give a shit
It was bullshit
I've been following your channel for years and generally thought your name was Bones
It's on his birth certificate
It is not It was fine I you I you I used to use it way more than my actual name so
I love when people think um Your name is Gray
Yeah, that's that's fun
That's my favorite wholesome moment
No, I am not Gray I'm not Bones my name is Reed
But he doesn't read
It's true
No, that's not true cuz you read your own work
My nickname has more letters than my actual name I just realized that This feels like a podcast with background drawings like any other video in real time without much edits And really chill it's like ASMR With I hate this heart thing both of your voices thank you We we try and chill we try and do chill what we're planning to do is become VTubers cuz then Then it looks like people are talking I I understand the whole VTuber thing now But I don't have to ever look good That'd be great
Yeah You just get to be a cute little character
It's okay Ursula we go through imposter syndrome once we start at least speaking for myself I still haven't started my webcomic due to it And too many ways to start
Oh mood
Yeah, I don't know you just gotta gotta go for it
Yeah, I believe in you Valerie I bet you can do it real good
There are people who have worse comics terrible attitudes Do not care And they put out their webcomic And they're fine so There we go that's the real answer there's people there's people That if you don't wanna be this person you're not this person but there's people who have way too much confidence for no reason And they're really rude about it
Yeah
And those are the people I dislike and when we were starting doing comics and people were giving us critiques and some of them valid some of them not They were really rude about it so I was never gonna listen to them And I still disagree with them to this day on some level Ursula took it way more to heart And changed her art a lot
There were some things that they were correct about like looking back on it but yeah they were very hurtful
Yeah
They were mean
Yeah, I disagree on everything they said to me about my writing because I'm the best and I've just always been the best I don't know it's like I feel like a lot of the times Like all of the advice that I've been given and critiques like there's some grain of truth to it somewhere but they cannot Direct it in the right place Like people had like complaints about like Sovereign um and the writing And I agree but I don't agree with any of the points it 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 felt like um Cinema sins style complaints where it's like neglecting like what the piece is even about
Yeah
They were like make Sovereign into a political drama and I'm like no Just no like it's silly like it doesn't have to be
It's about sky pirates
You can have like a serious thing about sky pirates
Totally but
It's just silly it's like a guy eats a candle like chill
I think like yeah I think you're right a lot of the times they'd point out issues but yeah their prescriptions weren't Good
Yeah And then like at that point it's like I just don't want critique like I just don't care uh you just don't look at that stuff It's not worth it look at it from the people you trust and whatever but Yeah Watched the recent video earlier and relate so much to with the really overconfident attitude back in your amateur days then Falling into an opposite attitude
Oh yes
See I don't
My people
I'm not that person that's why I couldn't make that video and that's what I've been thinking about where it's just like I've just always been overconfident And I remain overconfident and like I haven't learned my lesson
I miss the days when I was so overconfident Blissful except they weren't cuz it was it came from insecurity
Exactly
It was it was stinky
I think you had every right to be overconfident Like listening to you talk about how overconfident you are as a teen and how you cringe it's like yeah it was a bit cringe But like I think you had a lot of reason to be as confident as you were I think your art's always been really good And even when you look back at your art like those little Scott Pilgrim doodles in my sketchbook those are still so cute And if you saw anyone else draw them you'd be like oh my god what a cute style And then oh my god you're just sixteen really Yeah
I was that kid
You were good you legitimately good there were things that you had to improve on like everyone else does but like no Mine came from my problem was not so much my overconfidence that's not something I've changed Um I don't think I think I think there's I think very few artists are actually overconfident I think actual just regular confidence Looks like overconfidence to most artists
Yeah
Because of insecurity and I just don't have that I think I'm just regular confident I've worked hard on my writing I Tell people advice and it helps them so like at this point like I just have to accept that I am I am good at that I'm just good at writing it's something I've worked hard on it's cool and everything's great
Oh yeah
What I did need to work on which I think was ma- way more important um because overconfidence honestly doesn't hurt anyone It just doesn't it's my toxic attitude is like So rampant and writing communities because of insecurity right and my thing was just tearing other people down and being hypercritical And getting over that was important for me because that's just A shit attitude to have and it's harmful to people and community And it clearly came from insecurity of just looking at people and being like I'm better than this person I'm better than that person As opposed to just being like oh I'm really good and other people are doing their own thing and sometimes I don't understand it and that's okay And some people are just starting out and that's also okay and also You can't be the best artist in the world cuz no such thing as it exists
Yes
There's a lot of like insecurity around like Other people's writing and like why are they successful why are they making money it's just like they have an audience people like their art like just get over it
Yep
You're not gonna win over those people and they're like not wrong for liking what they like And there can be critiques about like problematic aspects or whatever but that's like completely different
Totally
Yeah, I agree with Bones the way with having a little bit of confidence with your work yes yes Like even if you're like super overconfident there are people who show up in my uh like DMs or whatever like when I'm trying to put together like an anthology and they're like super Confident about like art that like I just don't think is like at a level to be In like what I'm making like I think they need to practice and go on more Whatever but like do they harm me in any way no um not at all and you You'll hear these people who will then complain about these like overconfident people like they're never gonna learn blah 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 Like why do you even care like why do you care if these people are confident about their art And undeservingly so like quote unquote like what what does that Do for you
Yeah
What are they hurting if they're only hurting themselves like who cares
Yeah
If they ask you for help if they Wonder like what is some advice like why am I not doing well like you can talk to them but like What is the purpose?
Yeah
I don't know Like I don't know it's fun to complain about people behind their backs Like I'm doing now about these people who show up in my DMs and it's kind of annoying but like that's where it ends As long as they're not being rude
Yeah
There is like a really strange one that I I still don't really understand And they were like that's okay I figured you wouldn't really understand my work and I'm like okay Not that's we we went our separate ways and everything was good the end So yeah I feel like if you're worried about being that person Like your worry is that people secretly hate you and that's like a completely different thing
Yeah
I feel like there's a root to it if you're worried about overconfidence
Yes
You're worried that people think you're bad
Definitely
Yeah
Oh yeah, like mine all comes from like seeking approval
And if you're someone who's worried about it you're not that person
Yeah exactly
That overconfident person just really does not self reflect
No No in fact like I've been trying to like stop being so Like self deprecating
Yeah
Cuz it I don't know it I annoy myself with it Where like Uh, for example, in a recent work meeting, I was talking and I, I had an idea for like a thing we were brainstorming and I was like, this might be a stupid idea. And then my manager cut me off and she was like, no. It's not stupid. Just say it.
Yeah.
And we'll talk it out. Like, don't, don't disregard your idea before you've even put it out there. And I was like, oh, yeah, you're right. And then I said it and they were like, oh, that's a good idea. And then we talked about it more.
Yeah.
So like, yeah, I was like, you know what? I should just say like. Be neutral and be like, here's my idea. Does this work?
That's the real secret is like, people are annoyed by overconfident people, but. Self deprecating, underconfident people are equally annoying.
Yes.
It's, it's could be really frustrating when someone's just not confident.
Yeah. Even though I totally understand where they're coming from, I am that person.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not saying it's, yeah. It's difficult.
Totally. It's a hard balance.
Yeah, it's hard. It's, it's really hard. And like, I don't. The thing is like people who are like annoyingly underconfident, like it's the same level as like overconfidence for me or it's just like. Yeah, you're being silly, but okay, whatever. I don't care. Not my circus.
No. Does not matter to me.
But that's also my hangup too. Because I. Don't like compliments and stuff and I don't like. Searching for like assurance and stuff. So when I see people who are like. Is my art good? And I'm like, yeah, shut up. Okay, like. Get up for yourself. Like that's me at me. That's my own hangup right there. Yeah. It's, yeah, I find myself bad and annoying for. Wanting approval and help. So when other people ask for it, like I.
How dare you ask for the thing I can't ask for?
Specifically approval, like I like helping people.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think another part of it is there are some people that use that kind of toxically.
Oh, totally.
To make you feel bad about yourself. And I think that's people I've run into and it, it colors my look on things.
True, yeah, that can be upsetting.
I think, um, I think the way that it happens that's really upsetting is like when you're doing something. You're doing like art, you're doing something beautiful and they're like. Why are you so much better than me? Like that attitude?
Yeah.
It's just like. That is not a compliment.
No.
That's, it's really rude and it makes you feel bad about. Sharing your art, I guess. I guess that's where we, this whole conversation started. It's like, there are people who will just make you feel bad for. Having a skill. And like, that's just a rude thing to do. That's your issue, not mine. Like if you like my art, just say you like my art, like you don't have to make it a competition.
Yeah.
And that was me in the past, always making everything a competition. Donnie, I am not a goose. That's the point in this. Ever settle down with a man, he'd be the goose.
Men are geese.
Men are geese. I'm not gonna be some goose on the nest while my gander's off candorin. Do you feel like you're moving at a faster clip now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we, we've worked guys.
You convinced me.
Yeah, we gotta get this done.
Yeah.
We want the joy of cute comments on Webtoon. And maybe our own website. If we ever figure that out.
That sounds like such a fun challenge. I wanna do it, but who has the time when you're making a webtoon?
Step one, VTube. Step two.
Profit.
Yes, no. I think you guys put the answer to the wor- to words in what I felt. Oh my God. Yeah, I think we, we slowly made our way to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a rude thing.
Yeah.
It's manipulative. Some people. Like most people don't do it on purpose.
Yeah, exactly.
But some people will do it to make you feel bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's rude to make people feel bad about something that they worked hard on.
Yeah, exactly.
And like, if you're like self-conscious about that, you never want to be like, like. Shut up. Like I worked really hard on this. Like. You're not as good as me because you haven't had as much practice. That's, that's not my fault. Or you are just as good as me and. You just need self-confidence. And that's again, also not my problem.
Totally.
I'm empathetic to how you feel, but that doesn't mean I have to make myself feel bad.
Yeah, cuz it's, yeah, cuz it pushes you into. Either. Like underselling yourself or insulting yourself or praising them or putting them above you somehow. Instead of, the conversation should be like, wow, you did a really good job. I'm inspired by you or. I don't know. If you don't have no- nothing nice to say, don't say nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, it is a manipulative tactic, even if they're not doing it consciously. I know I've also had trouble. I've been in circles where like. You know, people are hypercritical or like, you know. Badmouth other people. Who do their work and then I'm like, well, I can't share mine. They're gonna say mean stuff about me.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah. You want everyone to build, build each other up.
Yeah, cuz the best times I've had are when everyone's just like. Excited about everyone else's work.
Yeah, and just accept where everyone is in their art journey and.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Literally.
Doesn't matter. Um. There's really cute right now.
You sure cute.
I forgot. Okay, the chicken is in the cat, dog bed. There's like a little, there's like a little turkey, uh, Kong, like. Like a little rubber turkey that we fill with peanut butter for the dogs. It's just really cute. And the cat is currently curled around it.
Yes.
Thank you both. Can't believe it took me this far. Sorry, I blanked. I just, I had one of those moments where I went to space. I think I have to go to the washroom and I just keep thinking about it.
Okay. Instead of going to space, go to the bathroom. Yeah, no problem. I hope this was helpful. Conversation cuz it's stuff we've. You know, I guess in my video, you can see I still deal with it, but yeah, it's definitely stuff we've gone through. Especially earlier, like when we were younger and starting out in comics, like yeah, there was a lot of. A lot more insecurity, a lot more like fear around posting. Whereas like, the more you do it, the easier it gets. And you'll see that there's, it's mostly supportive people out there. Who just want to like, share work and have fun. Which is awesome. In fact, the comics community, like I think we talked about it in the last stream. They're probably like one of the most supportive communities I've ever been in. Like everyone is so. Excited to promote each other and read each other's work. And become friends and like draw fan art of each other or like do guest strips for each other. It's really, yeah, just super supportive. Everyone's so nice. And then there's occasionally, there's a jerk, but usually you just don't talk to that person and they don't really. Join in with everyone cuz they're a jerk. Like even, um. Cuz there's so many different like circles within comics, like we definitely are in the, you know, like queer fantasy comic kinda, kinda side. And even within that, there's like different groups, obviously, like people who become really close. Um, and there's different. You know, and you can fall in with people that you like publish with, kind of, you know, if you're in like a collective or a. A publisher, like you fall in with people who are in the same groups as you, but everyone's so nice, like. There's so much cross pollination between everyone, regardless of like what group you're in. It's awesome. Trying to think of. Things to say. I went to space.
Do art.
True.
You end up like needing so much frickin' water whenever you stream and then you go to the bathroom a million times.
Yes.
Cuz, oh my God. Streaming is way harder than people think. Like. Like it's hard. And difficult, sorry.
More than people think.
No, it's like physically draining in a way that you don't expect.
Yeah.
Especially if you wanna have one where you're more like podcasty and talk the whole time. Yeah. I feel like that's where like V-tubing will help because it, it still makes it look like you're there in a weird way. It's weird.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it, I felt the same way with like, um, switching to. Like, uh, cuz my, my work, my, my day job switched from being in office to like, uh, all virtual. And it's more exhausting to be on a video call than it is to be in a meeting room with a bunch of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why. Okay, I have theories, but.
Ursula, have you ever felt conscious about people watching you? Your art before?
Um, I used to. Um, I kind of challenged myself with it. Where.
I feel like a lot of it was just like me constantly asking you to stream art for me.
Literally? I think that was it. I think a big part of it was like you and you wanted to watch me draw, which encouraged me. And. I'd see people streaming and be like, I wanna do that.
Yeah.
And it's like, I can't do that if I'm not willing to like show people my work. And then I kind of like pushed myself to like go out to public places and draw and. Uh, draw for Bones and draw with friends and do live streams and eventually you kind of, it's whatever.
I think the hardest thing for you is not the drawing in front of people and more the, um, talking.
Oh, hundred percent. I was really shy about it for a long time.
I've not been.
No, you are born to talk in front of people.
I, I don't know, I'm one-on-one, I, I can't. I, I'm scared to like get my passport changed, like, you know, like. I, I live the, the anxiety life in that regard, but like public speaking and speaking on live streams, I am down. Like I, you couldn't stop me from doing YouTube. Like I was just, I was that kid. This is like on YouTube, wanna be a YouTuber, YouTube-ing my hardest. And I just like, I like the sound of my own voice. I'm just so confident in, in two areas.
Oh, yeah.
One, I love the sound of my own voice. Two, I love my writing. It works out great for me.
Quite.
I can see it even in this stream. I'm just a chill little guy.
Hell, yeah.
Yeah, but like me and Ursula, we used to do like, um, little streams so she could show off her art. Um, to me because we lived in different houses, you know? And so I would watch her draw and we'd chit chat and we'd end up doing it on like public livestream platforms.
Livestream.com.
Yeah, and, and some other ones.
Yeah, we did try a few.
Because like. It, it was just the easiest way to do it. And then like randos would show up.
Yes.
It was weird.
Yeah, cuz sometimes like our friends from school would show up and sometimes randos would show up.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 the, the olden, the olden days. Oh my goodness, they are so cute right now.
All the kitties, they're like curled up with their little cheeks touching.
I love when they do that.
When they're little like cuddle.
When you squish their little heads together.
Puppies.
Donnie's looking great right now. Yes, perfect.
I love Donnie so much.
Hmm, that's fair. Let's dream. I'd wanna have with someone draw. While. Oh my God, I hate this. While, while calling, while chatting, especially related to the drawings. Yeah, that's the dream. I feel like it gets easier and easier to like livestream these days. And like actually get like an audience. YouTube especially is really good at that.
Yeah.
But who knows? I'm. I don't know. If the thing has changed with Twitch where most people have no one watching. That's demoralizing. It's always good to have like a friend to livestream with. Cuz, um. Sitting alone, talking to yourself is a skill.
Yeah.
So it's a special skill. Yeah. One thing I've also learned is that to be a successful live streamer, you have to be diagnosed with ADHD.
It's true.
Like every single live streamer I watch is like, oh yeah, I have ADHD. I feel like. I feel like it's a requirement because you need to be able to bounce between random thoughts and just fill space and. I think that is just a very ADHD quality and it. Yeah. You guys are so silly talking about your OCs and all. I love my OCs. I'm excited to talk about, um, more of. My crow story stuff. Cuz I wrote a bunch and now I have like. I feel like I have like thirty episodes worth of things to talk about now cuz like I'm at thirty-three thousand words of world building. And like a thousand words is like an hour usually, hour and a half, like half an hour, so. It's really good. It's the topic videos that are hard and ideally in the perfect world, I wouldn't have to like always be doing them. Um, but they're kind of what bring people to the channel and what people are most interested in. And it's not like I hate doing them. It's just sometimes it gets really difficult to like come up with ideas for them all the time.
Cuz sometimes we get, we're like, I am very passionate about this topic and I wanna like share my thoughts on it. And sometimes it's like, uh. What, what do I talk about?
Yeah. And I've just been dealing with the idea of like, if we, if neither of us have anything to talk about. We should just sit and think about it for a while and if we miss the deadline, whatever.
Yeah. Let's not be a content farm.
We're not a content farm. We're human beings.
I'm a human being.
But talking about OCs and stuff, that I can go about forever. Cuz that's like my preferred thing to do, like. I always have to remember that YouTube is, is kind of like an outlet. To get work done. And to bring people to our comics and stuff that we're very excited about and. Kind of like advertise it through showing off like the little panels that we're drawing and stuff. And it all works out. It works really well for doing that. But, yeah, I don't know where I was going. Hi Cole.
Oh, hey Cole. What's up? Long time no see. Oh, hey, Cole. What's up? Long time no see.
And then we always have to do the little critique stream. I'm glad, that was like one of our best ideas was the critique streams. That was so good.
I'm always shocked people come back and the advice I give is helpful. Cause sometimes I'm just like, you're doing a good job.
I mean, some people, that's, that's, sometimes you need to be told when you're doing a good job.
I mean, same.
It can be really hard to find people to like look at your art though. You gotta remember that.
That is true, to find people who are in your niche.
Uh, you would trust talking about them.
Yes.
Thank you guys blabbing about OCs genuinely. It's, um, where?
You, you have trouble seeing past the heart emoji thing?
Yeah, can you move it? No.
No.
It's so bad. It's such bad UI.
I know, it should be down like beside the comment bar.
Um, where people get interested and it always works. I hope it works. Um, you know what else I hope works? The like button. If you're here and you haven't hit the like button, you better test it out and make sure it works. Um, we'll test this. If it works, it should bring more people, people in. Like it's crazy how it's crazy how important likes are on a livestream. Cause like, yeah, like you can watch it, like you get a bunch of them and then suddenly your video starts getting recommended. It's like insane how it works.
Didn't know.
Yeah, no, it's important.
Well. Help some gays out if, if you're in mind.
I don't know how well it works with like the average video. I mean, you should like those just to be sure, but for the, um, live streams, like it's crazy.
Well.
It works really well. Um. That's my tip for you. If you guys are live streaming, ask for likes.
Yeah.
Um, you feel like such a YouTuber, you feel real, it's validating and it, it also is helpful.
Yes.
And calls to action actually work. It's weird.
It's weird.
It's, it's crazy. But genuinely though, like you hear people do it and you're like, why do you do this? No one actually does it, but it, it, it literally, it literally does work.
I literally sometimes like people, you know, they'll have like a little graphic pop up that's like subscribe and I'll be like, oh yeah, I should. I watch this channel all the time.
Yeah.
Sometimes I do the thing.
No, it's, it's, people need a reminder. So here, how it works. Um, we all have ADHD and we're always forgetting to do things. I understand. If you're on YouTube, you have ADHD. I'm diagnosing you right now.
Also true. All my favorite creators have ADHD.
Because YouTube is the home of two things. You got your little TikTok, ten second videos or whatever, and then you got ten hour video essays and those are the two genders of ADHD. Am I wrong? Yeah, I guess autism also falls in there. You're not neurotypical, is, is all I'm saying. Um, I've been busy lately, working hard. Working hardly getting weekends off. Sorry, I haven't seen you guys in like forever. No problem. You have no obligation. I'm sorry that you haven't got to see us in a while if we bring you joy. So that's, that's the real answer there.
Sounds like work's been a lot.
Yeah, that sucks.
Ugh. Not having weekends off is really tough.
Yeah.
Cause like, even if you have a day off in the middle of the week or something, it's hard cause everyone else is working. I used to hate that about, um, when I worked in hospitality doing like weekend evenings, cause that's when, you know, all the business was happening.
Hated working there.
I did, I cried every time I went to work.
Yeah, that was not a good setup for like what jobs are like. Cause like everyone since has not been like that.
No, everyone else has been lovely. It was just that place.
The coffee sto- store.
Yeah, that one sucked.
Yeah.
The other coffee place I worked at was great.
Exactly, yeah.
Lovely people.
But the hospitality thing, that was like a meat grinder.
Oh, god, yeah.
Human spirit.
Correct.
Look at that face. That's a happy lady right there.
Yes.
Damn, you're moving at such a clip now. It reminds me of like when you were doing the, um, watercolors where I was like, okay, you need to get these done. And you're like, oh, okay.
Okay, I'll do it.
That was a, that was a real turning point for you. It was a real.
It was. I was very down on myself until finishing the watercolors and it's helped really get me back on the horse.
Yeah, the watercolor horse.
The art horse.
The art horse. What are those things? A drying horse? You sit on?
Yeah.
Yeah. That audacious burgundy suit, am I right?
We love it.
We love him.
Donnie be cute.
Donnie do be cute. I love him. He's the one character I never expected to pursue right into my heart.
He, he was a surprise.
Yeah.
Surprise.
Sleeper hit.
Good boy, yeah.
Currently working at a wareho- ho- ho- warehorse. It's like, oh my god, you turn into a, yeah, the warehorse. I'm currently a warehorse, building palettes, um, that go to stores, very stressful and not fun job, period. That sucks.
I'm sorry, that really sucks.
I have a question for you guys. Shoot. I wish you guys get as popular as people will clip streams like those VTubers. It'll be great. I would love that.
That would be fun.
Yeah, we just need cute little VTube things happening here.
Yes.
But that's more work for Ursula.
True. I wanna do it.
I don't think it'll be as hard as you think it is.
No. Especially once I figure out like the the how to.
Yeah. Famous last words, am I right though?
I know.
I don't know. I'm, I, I'm always overconfident in your art skills for you. I'm like, you can animate. Like you're not the best, cause you don't have years of practice or whatever, but you can figure it out. You learn fast and you're great at art.
I think that was like okay, so I've been reading a bunch of like career advice books and stuff, which has been helpful. Um. But one of the really good pieces of advice was like, instead of worrying about being good at things, like focus on just like being willing to learn things.
Yeah, so what are your thoughts on wanting a work ethic that has burnout outside of South Korea webtoons, wanting a work ethic? It's been on my mind and I'm not sure where to host my webcomics. Um, the answer I think is that that's really shitty. Um, but it's pretty across the board, um, with all of these like webtoon posting things, like Tappus has its own problems and stuff. Like you're not gonna find a really ethically perfect, um, easy place to post. Um, outside of like forming like your own little collective thing or having like your own website. Um. Yeah. Webtoon not wanting. Oh, webtoon not wanting a work ethic that has burnout outside of South Korea. Okay. Well, that's good not to yeah, they all kinda suck. Um, webtoon contracts, they suck.
Yeah.
They're not good. Um. But they're not unique in the fact that their, uh, contracts suck.
Yeah.
Um, if you want a good contract, you're not gonna be going it alone, right? You want like an agent or at the very least like a, a lawyer to look at said contracts, cause that's, it's a, it's a big thing. But if you're just posting on webtoon, like line webtoon, like you're fine. I just personally wouldn't, um, sign up an IP there.
Be wary.
I just needed to know ahead of time. Yeah, no, that's fair. Like be really wary, wary of them. Um, and when everyone is having like a connipshit.
A connipshit?
A connipshit, a conniption of, um, like if you get involved in like publishing communities, everyone will freak out. And just don't take it personally when someone talks about like a publisher that either year under or not, because all, every single time they're correct. Every, every single time someone is like, um, this publisher, they're bad, like watch out for them. Th- they're correct. Um, it can really suck when you finally get like a lead and then you learn that they suck. But, uh, they, they do every single time across the board. And people get screwed and it sucks and I, 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 I want the best for all of you.
Yeah. Thing is, there are people who work in publishing who really care about like stories and treating creators fairly, but most of them just wanna make money off your work. And that means not giving you money.
It's unfortunate there aren't any good ethics that are for artists, all artists honestly, especially animators, comic artists, those who have to be involved with companies. Yeah. Yeah, i- it sucks. Um, it's, there's just like not a lot of money in comics. Um. Like even at the big levels, except like the really, really big levels. Like if you're making a really, really big money in comics, it's probably because you're getting like, um, movie deals and stuff like that kind of.
Yeah.
That's where the real money is. Um, but comic books and stuff, like it's passion. And, um, because everything is so thin, like the margins become like so thin, like I just don't let someone put their hand in your pocket.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's gonna be like merchandising and stuff. Like for us, like the most money we make is on YouTube, like.
Yeah.
It's just, there's more money in it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The comic and writing and more creative side of it is out of passion.
Yeah, because like, yeah, companies are especially bad at those because people want to do those things. Like there's passion to do those things.
Hmm.
Yeah. My advice, form your own publishing company with your friends.
Yes.
Yeah, but I personally, I just have a really negative opinion, like that it's just a bias of mine.
Uh, yeah, true, cause I'm sure you'll find people who.
And I have friends who have gone with traditional publishers and had a good time, but I've had equally amount of them have horror stories about yeah, just so many levels of awful.
Yes.
And they just don't treat people well, like. Yeah. And like, I can understand a lot of it, like, um, not getting like return calls and all that stuff. Like I understand the other side of it, but it still sucks.
Yeah.
And they're just yeah, it just sucks.
Sucks all around.
Yeah, don't get into video games. They suck. Ugh. Animation sucks. Life sucks. I don't know. The people who can make money out of it, they're amazing and they're cool.
Oh, yeah.
And I hate being the person that tells people like not to follow their dreams, but I'm not saying that. I'm saying that your dreams will be crushed if you follow them in those directions. And you can keep your dreams alive outside of them and make a pretty good amount of money for yourself. Like if you're like an individual artist and you sell comics on the side, like it can't it's not always gonna be a career, but like it's pretty easy to make like at least like some bonus income. Yeah, like I don't think it's I don't think it's like impossible to make money, like especially like if you're like really young, like you can make a pretty good amount of like bonus on the side cash by doing comics. Um, with all your free time and it's helpful. Um. People being in capitalism long enough that their humanity just vanishes. Yeah. Yeah. Well, it's that thing where like CEOs, like they have nothing to do with like their industries that they're in. Like they just kinda hop around from place to place or whatever. And people who have no reason to be getting the amount of money they do, get the amount of money they do. So yeah, just go it on your own. Um. Yeah, like I go, I go even farther where like I sell things on Amazon, but like at this, like no. Like Amazon just screws me on such a level. Or like, I don't care. Like if you really wanna read my books, like you, uh, go to a place where I actually make money. Like it's not that hard. That's the, the end of it. Like I'm not selling ebooks because the audience there sucks. They write mean reviews about you. They smell bad and I have to be on Amazon. Like screw that. I love itch.io.
Oh.
It's by, it's been good to me. Um, I wish, I hope there's like a more culture of like selling webcomics and novels there, cause it was good. And if itch.io starts sucking, we, we'll move somewhere else, you know? Etsy sucks, but like, um, it's easy to use.
Yeah.
And I still make more money than I would on Amazon, so.
True.
The Amazon audiobook thing is ridiculous. Like audiobooks are such an effort. And you sell a book and you make a dollar, like at most. Usually you make cents on the dollar. Meanwhile, I sell a book on itch.io and I make like fifteen dollars. Like I make the whole shebang myself. It's ridiculous. Like where is the money going?
So literally.
Yeah. Like I would rather give my books out for free, um, than sell them on Audible half the time.
Cause the thing is with our audiobooks that we have done, it's like we've done all the sourcing and recording and mixing. It's not like you're paying for them to do it.
Yeah, they do nothing.
They do nothing but host it, like.
Like I get it, like hosting stuff is a lot of money or whatever, but like I have a Google Drive for free. YouTube exists, like Amazon, I don't think you need this. It, it is so much to make you just like hate everything if you try and go through the normal channels. I'm just such a little like rebel without a cause. Well, I guess I have a cause, but it's like yeah, I just don't, I don't care. It's just, I don't care if I'd make more, more money selling on Amazon and more sales. I just think that the people on Amazon suck and the readers on Amazon suck. And they just don't have a passion for it, you know? Like the people who are willing to go to my little tiny weird store on a website they never go to and support me directly, um, and sometimes tip, the fact that they're allowed to tip is amazing and I love that. Um. Yeah, they're just nicer people. They're nicer audiences. They like my books. The rabble on on Amazon, they just, they don't. I just don't love. That's my rant, my random rant. Ugh. But you know what I mean? Like Amazon is the place that's gonna be flooded with a bunch of AI generated content and probably already is.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just gonna get worse and worse and
The thing is like
I much prefer buying erotica on itch.io from furries than I do buying it on Amazon. Cause I at least know the furries are getting their due.
Getting that coin.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the thing is like Amazon, it's where all the scams are.
Totally.
Cause it's so big and accessible on both sides.
If you wanna make money, it's kind of good to just be boutique.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like. Like the idea of going like mainstream or whatever and chasing that just does not appeal to me because it's like. There's so much crap along the way. And I would just rather stay a small fish with like a dedicated group of people who like my stuff. Like I just don't wanna go outside of my little gay niche, like I don't I don't need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just like.
I wanna have enough so that when I'm retired, I can be a little little grandpa with my African gray parrot. Um, I'm still writing my novels. I'm already basically that, but I also want my wife there.
Oh, cool.
You get to be a little lady with your wolf cut.
My piercings and my drawing my animes. No, they're so cute.
That's so very cute.
I think like the important thing that we've always thought is like, we just care about like sharing our work. Like we just wanna put stuff out there. Doesn't really, the channel doesn't necessarily matter.
Yeah. I just want, I want my work put out to people that will enjoy it and be nice.
Yeah, because like I think about doing like mainstream publishing and like the only thing that appeals is like getting it in front of more eyes. But everything else is horrible.
Yeah, but you also have to do all your work anyways.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I'm just greedy and I I I'm overconfident and I don't wanna be told what to do. It can it could never be me. I I did a whole video on this. I don't like going on this forever because it's just so much salt. And it's so silly. It's I just wanna talk about my OCs and be able to spoil things willy nilly. I don't wanna sign an NDA ever because I could never keep to one. Non-disclosure agreement, more like shut up, it's my thoughts agreement. I have a commercial running right now. Hopefully that helps you.
Did it do the thing?
Oh, my god.
We literally said it to not run ads and it's like, I'm gonna run them anyway.
Yeah, well, I I haven't had it open because um I have to stare at the uh YouTube chat. And in order to make the YouTube chat big enough to see, I make the UI inaccessible to use. It's the worst.
Zero out of ten.
I didn't know that.
It's nice.
Neat. Delicious, neat. Look at these cats. They're so snuggled. I saw her work on her paws in his little side. Oh, my goodness, my eye is hurting. I don't know why.
Did you put moisturizer in it?
No, no, I didn't. Sorry, the underface.
I know, I'm like, oh my god.
I love it.
Would that be acceptable? No. That is not acceptable.
You should just release a comic that's just thumbnails.
Oh, that's the dream.
You know what comics make money? The fricking like um gag strips.
Oh, yeah.
Like that kind of stuff that pops off.
I do not have the passion to make those.
No.
I love them, but I not my thing.
I would burn out so fast.
Oh, yeah.
I don't mind that. It's for creators. I like, like you.
You're sweet.
That's fair.
That is true. If I like someone, I'm like, I'll watch your ad.
I always forget that YouTube has ads because I've been um using Premium for a while. It's like because Premium is like so cheap for what it is, like it's expensive. But compared to like all the streaming services, like I get like infinite content out of YouTube that I enjoy very much. Um, and I'm willing to support it, you know?
Yeah.
And like I watch on my TV and I just got sick of ads. So I was like, okay, I can justify this purchase.
We shared it with your mom and changed her life.
It's yeah, exactly.
She was talking about how like she'll put on like a video, like a like a quiet video to fall asleep to.
Oh, yeah, and the family plan you can actually use.
Yes, they don't have to be in the same freaking house as you.
Anyways, what was she, what was my mom saying?
Yeah, she was like listening to a video to while she was falling asleep and then ads would come on and like wake her up and scare her. She has like these like headphones that are like in a a headband. Like it's just like uh you're supposed to wear it in winter, but she puts it on to go to bed so that she doesn't have stuff in her ears. And the ads were were terrifying her.
Wow, it's good we changed her life.
Yes, she's very happy now.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's you can still do the thing where you have friends and you do a family plan together and it works. Here's me advertising for YouTube.
Yeah, YouTube, give us extra money for all this hard work we're doing for you.
The thing is YouTube doesn't advertise Premium really good.
No.
I think the best part about Premium is that like the main, aside from like the ads. Like these, these are like the two reasons. It was like the ads and being able to close my phone and listen to music and videos and you have like YouTube is, it's like having like a Netflix type thing and you get Spotify. Like because you have the entire access to like the YouTube Music app as well.
Yeah.
Which is like ridiculous. Um, like, why would I get Spotify at this point?
Well, I was thinking too, because I used to really enjoy using Spotify for podcasts, um but everyone just does their podcast on YouTube now.
Totally.
So I'm like, okay.
Yeah, it it works and YouTube is starting to get like the little podcast section. Yeah, no, it's cool. It's it's been worth it. It I hardly think about it. I don't I don't subscribe to much anymore, but that's one thing I'm like keeping.
Heck, yeah.
It's like getting like a Spotify suite. And like YouTube has like original content stuff, but like I don't care about it.
No. Definitely not.
I love all the weird movies you can find on YouTube for free. It reminds me of going to like the Walmart bin.
Oh, my god, yes, just like weird B-movies. You've never heard of.
Yeah. Juliet doesn't look happy. She having a bad time?
A little bit.
Oh, no. Sorry, I just got focused.
You you go into spacing it?
No, just focused and my throat is caving in.
Oh, no. Alright, how about I do this page?
And then we can sit down and you can do more pages?
Sure.
Without voiceover?
Yeah.
Sounds good, sounds good. Because I would like to get further into this.
Well, you don't want me working on the first scene for like three years?
Yeah.
Well, why'd you have to write the longest gosh dang opening scene ever?
Regardless of how long it is. The the page count remains the same, whether or not I divide the scenes differently or not.
No, 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 totally different.
It's two people talking to each other, like get over yourself.
Wow, you see how I'm treated? You see the abuse I I endure?
It's just draw the You're just drawing the same two people over and over again, like. Yeah, get off your goddamn high horse and draw, woman.
He said I'm just drawing people talking.
What's with this little axolotl in the corner of our screen, by the way?
Axolotl?
He's right here.
Oh, is it X National Axolotl Day?
Nope. Bing says axolotl, chat with Bing, learn more, axolotl. How does an axolotl differ differ from most amphibians in terms of life cycle and metamorphosis? Why is the axolotl able to regenerate body parts? Mail a name from Aztec mythology, look at that face. What is an axolotl? Incredible facts, axolotl care guide. Gingerbread cookies.
Oh, I need to get an axolotl in in Stardew. Need a little guy.
Yeah, he's a little guy.
Did you see the little bunny I put in my room?
No, I haven't been in your house because I was, I've been waiting for you to be done.
That's true. I've been dragging my feet.
I didn't wanna walk into your room until you unveil it.
Oh, okay, I should finish it.
Yeah. Mods, we have a lot of mods.
We do, we have many Stardew mods. It's a ridiculous amount.
Our start, our Stardew game is wild.
We have extended Riverside and East Scarp.
Yeah, and others.
And others, it's a lot.
Yeah, and all of like the project populate. Assets. It's fun, it's a great time.
It's really fun.
And like a zillion different animals.
Yep, animals, new crops, new machines.
We have like two, we have like three barns full of dragons.
It's so fun. They're all so cute.
Yeah. It's insane when all of our animals come out. Because I also have an expanded barn mod where you can have fifteen animals per barn. That's why it's so ridiculous.
Oh, my god, and every day we play, he's like, um, I'm gonna go buy a new barn and I'm like.
I'm on my last one. I need a magical chicken barn to separate my phoenixes from my magic chickens.
I don't believe you.
No, I'm I'm really done for real this time.
Don't believe.
Alright, well, joke's on you, I am done. I am also tired of going to Robin every morning and the fact that she takes Monday and Tuesday off, like what is wrong with her?
Yeah, Robin.
And like, yeah, I could get a mod at this point to make it go faster, but like I'm already so far deep. And I I have one barn left to do. Oh, my god, Juliet looks so cute there.
She's always cute.
Yeah, but she looks extra cute. I can't wait for you have to having to like tastefully cover her nudes.
Just thirty-five pages of covering her nudes.
Exactly. It's gotta be webtoon safe.
It's true.
Perfectly placed. Topiaries or whatever.
There's always chest-high walls nearby.
Well, these book two is a lot less naked. Eventually we'll be free of it. But not that free. Because everyone in AVO is very free.
Naked.
Oh, my god, I I don't know. I just make characters naked all the time. I don't even like nudity.
I think you just don't wanna describe clothes. I think this is all an excuse.
Yeah, you figured me out. Everyone in my, everyone in my mind is more liberated than me.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Your parents are hippies.
My parent. My dad certainly was a hippie.
Your dad was a big hippie.
My dad, big nudity fan.
Just wanted to live out in the woods naked.
I think it all just started with like dragons being naked because they shift between like human and dragon form and burn off their clothes. And that just made sense to me. It just makes sense.
That's my favorite with like shifter characters.
Naked.
It's always like, yeah, the explanation of how they get their clothes. Because it's either it's like in the magic system that they just transform and they have clothes or whatever. They just like mallet space them or whatever.
Hell, yeah.
Yeah, or they have like a friend who always has clothes for them. It's the best. That's a delight.
Really stretchy pants.
Exactly.
This is the problem, the dragons are so big in AVO.
Yeah.
Those are some blushing cheeks. She does have a blushing issue.
You know it's a good stretch.
You feel like you've been exercised? Yeah. That's the.
When you crab walk backwards on the stairs, that's a good stretch.
This is a good stretch up the wall. Okay, I am too dead to continue talking.
Alright, let's get out of here.
Alright, it was nice seeing all of you.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for joining and liking and subscribing. Yeah, we really need to do that end card thing. That would be really, that'd be really smart of us. Alright, goodbye, guys. Love you.
Bye.